So I'm Jan Olson, Chair of Planning.
John McCullough, Planning.
I'm Melanie Keane, I'm on Planning Commission and I live here in Calis.
Woo-hoo!
Yay.
Gary Root, and I live in East Calis.
Yeah, and I'm in East Calis too, so, East Gospel Hallelujah.
And we have one absent member, but otherwise we're all.
Yeah, Ron Shaw is not gonna be here, he's also on Planning, and he's across almost the area, I mean, up and down the way, so, so if each of you could just introduce yourselves, tell us what your concern is, we're gonna take notes, and then we'll just do the brief thing and then open it up. Denise?
Oh, no, please, sir, oh, Denise Wheeler, I'm Chair of the Select Board and I'm here to learn.
I'm Allison Underhill, I live in downtown Adamant, although technically in East Montpelier. And I'm, yeah, I'm gonna write downtown, I'm just concerned about what possibilities might be out there.
I'm Barbara Whedon, and I live further up Adamant Road from Mr. Wood. And I've always been concerned about keeping Village of Adamant, or whatever you wanna call it, a very vital small community center, which includes residential possibilities.
Robbie Porter, I live on Haggett Road. Guess I'm confused that the Village minimum lot size boundaries go so far up there, I had no idea of that, and I'm wondering why that is, what are the justifications for that is?
That's, that's one of the reasons why we're here, to discuss.
Janet McLeod, I actually live in East Montpelier, but my studio was above the co-op, and I'm in Adamant, and I sort of wanna know what the road crew is up to, but that's, that's fine.
We weren't road crews, sorry.
Ken Trash, I live in East Montpelier also, but I happen to be the, one of the first persons at the Adamant co-op, so I'm just here to find out how that may have helped co-op.
Karen Kane, I live at East Montpelier, and I'm here to learn.
Right. Thank you for the email.
I'm Chris Andreessen, and I live right over there, yeah, across the road, so, and I'm kinda wondering about potential changes and what that would do to the people.
I'm Bill Porter, and I live on the, Adamant Road, at the top of the hill, and our land borders, all this stuff. What's going on?
Yeah, same.
Ruth Glur.
Same.
I'm Molly Porter, I'm their daughter, and I own a lot of this land along the other side of this pond, and I'm wondering why the village is gonna extend that way, I'm concerned about development on that whole side.
Hang on, I'm gonna type that one down. Okay, Glur?
I'm Larry Bush, I live on Bliss Pond Road, I'm on the Conservation Commission, the Lakes and Streams Committee, and I'm here to see what the planning commission is proposing and what you guys think about it, and also to get some of Gary's goodies, I guess.
And help yourself at any point to the goodies that are over there. What we thought we'd do is just start out with Adamant as it is today, without what the Planning Commission is proposing.
Did we get Gary?
Pardon?
Did we get Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, any question, introduce them.
There must be another one.
Yeah. So, what we have today, in this green hatch, and which everybody seems to have questions about, is that is the actual Village District for Adamant. And this is what it's been in our regulations, since whenever we've had regulations with a Village District, which is before my time, Gary can maybe impress.
Oh, right then.
Oh, okay. So, and this little orange thing here is what is called a Designated Village Center. And about, in 2015, or I don't know when it was, we applied for three areas of the town of Calis to be designated Village Centers with the state, and what makes it a Designated Village Center is you have a post office, a store, we have a church here, East Calis has the store, Maple Corner has the store and post office, so those were the three designated Village Centers. And what's important about that is, if we have that designated Village Center, the state gives grants based on the designated Village Center. So if we wanna have better walkways, or better bikeways, or anything to do with, with that kind of thing, and we wanna get grants, you use the Designated Village Center to get the grant. The issue came about then in 2015, the state started with a Shoreland Protection Act. And before this time, Calis' Shoreland Regulation only affected lakes that were 20 acres or more. When the state enacted Shoreland Protection Act, they went with ponds and lakes that were 10 acres. So, Adamant Pond is a 10-acre lake, and so it became, the state protection, Shoreland Protection Act affected Adamant Pond, and that's what you see here in the green, is the 250-foot overlay, and the brown around it is a 100-foot buffer. And that's what the state has as the Shoreland Protection Act. Now, the one thing about the state is, they stop the Shoreland Protection at roads. So if there's a road, there's, effectively, there's no buffer or anything else. So, and that's where John is pointing out where the road is, and where you are. So, what happened is, we have been working on planning for years now to change the current Shoreland Regulations for the town of Calis. And what we decided we wanted to do is make a Shoreland Overlay that pretty much copies what the state has, so that there's conformity to the state Shoreland Protection Act. And we were gonna do two things that were gonna be a little more, a little different. One was, we were not gonna stop at the road. If there was a road and the 250-foot mark went beyond, we would expect best management vegetative practices to also be practiced on each side of the road. In other words, the Shoreland Protection would go beyond the road. The other difference with the state is, the state has a 20% impervious surface mark, we were gonna keep our impervious surface mark at 10%. So, when we decided to look at developing a Shoreland, Calis Shoreland Protection or Overlay, we invited some folks from Conservation and Lakes and Streams, and one of the things that was stressed upon us was, why do we have a Village District so close to the edges of the lake? When the Village District is made for density, it's, it's, it's got, as you can see in the comparison, there's no minimum acreage in Village. And so, we wanted to hear from you, what do you think about having a Village District on the edges of the lake? Help me out, Gary and Melanie and John, what else did we wanna know? Basically, I think we wanted to hear from you, what you thought.
I'd also be interested in hearing how people feel about our proposed Shoreland Overlay actually extending into the Designated Village along with this 100-foot managed buffer and the maximum clearing, all occurring in the, right in the Designated Village Center.
So you mean, in this area here?
The overlap.
What do you think about this overlap here?
Right.
I have a question specifically about that overlap. Eric has been doing beautiful work on his gardens, certainly within that overlap, is that verboten, according to these rules?
Yeah, actually, but, but see, they're not rules yet.
Not for us.
We don't have these rules.
But is it, is it forbidden by the state rules?
No, the state stops at the road.
He's, he's between the road and the pond?
Yeah. Then actually, he's allowed to continue any, any current use, but if there was new use that involved clearing, he'd have to get permission from the state.
So, I don't know if he's been clearing, but he's been digging and building beautiful little gardens there, that would be not permitted?
If he's putting in new plants, then he probably doesn't have a problem, because the state wants to see the, their 100-foot buffer as tightly vegetated as possible. But technically, yeah, you should be having these things reviewed by the state. Even if it's just to say, I'm doing this and the state says, looks good, but yeah.
Well, what's the process of reviewing by the state? Calling up the state bureau, the state's taking an appointment, have somebody come out, file forms, get approval?
You got it, you got it, yeah.
Okay.
But, it's actually easier to deal with than you made it sound, for state agencies, mostly because they're so overwhelmed, they can't spend a lot of time on stuff.
What about grandfathering for prior existing?
That's there, in both the state regs and our, our.
Right, the state regs get into effect when you start something new. So, what you, what's grandfathered is grandfathered, but if you say, oh, I wanna build a deck on a house, or something on the other side, or I wanna add a little bit of something, you're doing something new, then you gotta go to the state. And eventually, if Calis has the same regulation, then you start out with our zoning administrator.
So, so you'd have to do it twice? Exactly. You'd have to get a Calis approval, and you have to get a state approval? That's the way it is right now, yes.
Right, that's the way it is now.
Except that the proposed Shoreland Overlay would exempt things that are already permitted by the state, so if you get green light from the state, you don't need to go separately to town, other than to say, there's what I have.
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily, no, still, well, right now, the way, because our, our regs aren't consistent with the state, you gotta go through DRB and the state review.
But if we change it, then you would only have to go through the state?
If we made them consistent, then, then what happens if, if they're consistent, the town can go to the state and we say, look what we did, we're copying the state, and the state can delegate to the town the responsibility of taking care of permitting. And that, that was one of the goals here, was to try to, for the applicant, to try to make it just a one point of contact for permitting, instead of going to two.
So why is the state, why is the town now proposing different, you know, going beyond the roads and the other things that differ from the state regulations?
Well, when we first were doing our Shoreland, we had a couple folks on, a couple organizations really don't like the state stopping at the road. Mainly because if you look at Bliss Pond Road, there's a lot of, the road goes right next to the lake, and everything stops, but if, if the 250-acre, or the 250-foot buffer goes beyond, then we wanna have that vegetative management on the other side of the road to control stormwater, to control whatever else, because it's from the road that goes into the lake that becomes the sediment and the phosphorus, and the problem is agroschandit. So, we thought we would be a little more stringent, if you wanna call it that, and, and say that we are not gonna stop at the road, we're gonna try to have best management practices on where.
So, I understand that the phosphorus is a problem, and I don't wanna minimize that, but I guess my question is, when you essentially create two sets of, right, two sets of regulations that are not the same, you complicate things for people a lot, and what you're talking about is those certain situations in which the state-protected designation would be superseded or exceeded by the town's designation, that can't be, that can't be very much percentage of shoreline in the town, and it can't be very much phosphorus, and it certainly is gonna be a pain in the ass for the people, for instance, people living along Bliss Pond Road, whose, all of whose property will then have to be, they'll have to go to the state or the town, apparently they'll have to go to both, if they wanna do anything on, I mean, there are, I don't know how many houses within 250 feet of the shoreline of Bliss Pond, for instance?
Bliss Pond is currently in our Shoreland Protection District right now, Shoreland District, and that has an 800-foot boundary, and it also has, it has a 50-foot vegetative buffer, but it's a 150-foot sort of no-bill zone. For 150 feet, there really aren't, isn't much that the, the only, the only limit past 150 feet of minimum lot size is three acres.
So can I?
And that is current zoning, right now, at Bliss Pond.
Can I paraphrase what I think I heard your concern to be, Robbie, is that basically, you might prefer to have us mimic, be, be the same as the state and not stop at the road? I mean, and stop at the road and not go beyond the road, to keep it consistent?
Well, I think there's a huge value in keeping things simple, especially when the cost of not keeping them simple are, seem kinda high for the.
Do you have any idea about the rationale of the state in making that decision not to go beyond the road?
It probably had a lot to do with camps around Lake Champlain.
Pardon?
Lake Champlain and some of the, and some of the, that kind of shoreline area, that probably had a lot to do with the language they came up with.
The people at the state were very, were very willing to, to say, listen, this is, this is not necessarily an ecological solution, this is a political solution. And it isn't what we wanted, but it's what we thought that we could get. To specifically answer your question as to why we are promoting that, that different boundary, it's because we had a meeting just like this, and the case was very persuasively made to, to follow the, these guidelines, and we listened to what was said, and, and it made sense to us, and so we modified the proposal based on that. So I, I do encourage you to feel optimistic about all of this, because it means that we're actually listening.
I personally think that it's very, very important for, for us as a town to exceed that other side of the road, because this is environmental, it's not the right thing to do.
Glur?
I just wanted to say that the Conservation Commission and the Lakes and Streams Committee, both organizations very strongly supported extending it beyond the road, so that we could, could achieve the benefits of protecting those bodies of water. I live on Bliss Pond, but I'm not, my property's not separated by the road, so I guess I don't have the same dog in the fight that the other folks do, but I very, very much hope that we can extend that so that future development, and hopefully, current development, if the owners are willing to do it, would, would create better buffers to protect Bliss Pond, because it gets an awful lot of sediment, just from the road itself, which can be helped at Bliss Pond.
So, the buffer, you're talking about vegetation, there's no building in that area anyway?
No, not, not.
So that, it has nothing to do with, nobody's ever gonna build there? But you're talking about encouraging people to plant certain kinds of things that help prevent?
Right, keeps the water habitat.
We've got plenty of existing structures within that 100-foot buffer, and if a person wants to modify their, a structure within that buffer, the state might tell them their mitigation strategies, do more vegetative buffer plantings, maybe put in a rain garden, do something to control surface water runoff, stuff.
And within, within the buffer, pretty much, you know, the co-op is part of that? I mean, it's all kind of within that, that structure, but it, you're non, you're grandfathered as a non-conforming building, and so, you know, it's, it's gonna stay that way, unless you decide you're gonna do something, or build something, then, then it's gotta go to the zoning administrator and then to the state, if, if you're within that 250-foot, if there's any building in that 250-foot.
Looks like the co-op's out, the co-op's not in it, but the next property, next property is.
It's that little corner.
Here's the, sorry, I'm having mouse problems here, sorry about that. There's the co-op right there.
Yeah, there's the co-op there, so it's that.
This parcel here is part of the 250-foot, so right now, yeah, I think it's Bear Peanow, a portion of that parcel, you actually have to go to the state and ask permission for, for work in this purple area here on this lot.
There should be two lots between the co-op lot and the, there's Marion Pruega's house, and then there's, and then there's what's part of the music school.
Correct.
In fact, there should be probably three parcels, and what used to be the Chase House.
Right. And then the. Well, it's all part of the, it's all part of the Bear Peanow, I mean, there are, but.
Okay, well, Marion Pruega's house is, or, who, who, I don't know who owns it?
Jenny.
Jenny.
Jenny owns it now, yeah.
She does, right.
So that's, that's a private, they own a parcel behind the music school, behind the co-op parcel.
Where's the co-op on there, John?
The little one right here.
The crossroads?
Yeah, right in the crossroads.
So the dam, the music school, the dam and all that is part of the, in the purple?
Yeah.
Right? And the pools, the, the pools that come across the road?
The what?
The pools along there.
Oh, the pool along, oh.
It doesn't show on this, but I'm assuming it's in line with this, this little river, so, a portion of that may actually be inside the state Shoreland Protection Act. Well, not the state, but our proposed Calis. The wouldn't be the state, the state doesn't cross the road.
One of the pools is actually on the, on the pond side of the road, so that would be, that would apply.
So.
You mean the one between the Beaver Dam and the, and the Stone?
Oh, the concrete.
The way it looks right now, anyway.
So the question that, are there any more questions about the shoreline?
I have one, one question about that, the shoreline of that, we always used to call the Beaver Pond, I guess you're calling Adamant Pond, that's a, been a quite variable and evolving shoreline over the years, how does this, and, and the beavers affect that? And I think just natural filling in, so how does, how do these state regulations deal with that, or how do the town regulations deal with that?
Not much.
I look today, it's under mean water level, so that must be like the average water level of it, right, you can look, where is open water, is that right?
Whatever the mean water level is, that's what it is, the state can tell you where that is.
And actually, this is how the rivers are, are Shoreland, it is defined by the mean water level.
But it changes every year, right?
Yeah, it does, cut, you can't change it every year.
So, so you have nothing to do with the, like, that dam, which is broken right now? So, so really, the state, if we were concerned, which we are, we should go to the state and say, since you made us do this, now you're gonna fix it, right? What is that?
I don't know who owns the dam, whether it's the state or, I think it's the, the musical people.
Music school.
The music, it's a music school there.
The musical people own that dam, 'cause I remember when it broke, being down here, with the water flowing down the road.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, Eric thought it was the state, so, okay.
Do you think the dam is broken now?
Yeah, it is.
Well, it's, it leaks, yeah.
It leaks.
But I think it's always leaked, it's just there's so little water that it hasn't helped.
Yeah, the flow's all low.
Eric, there's something about those tubes have shifted, so.
Oh, so you're kind of the Beaver, the Beaver Pond?
The Beaver baffles, the Beaver baffles have helped with the situation there, this year the water level is really low.
Right.
But other years, and in the springtime and stuff like that, the Beaver baffles really do.
Oh, they did, it was true.
Really help.
Well, I think the beavers have abandoned that dam anyway, and it's deteriorating, and the Beaver baffles are not in the same position that they were in originally.
The state will come out and look at those every little while, check them out.
Any other questions on the Shoreland portion of this, that either what we're proposing or what the state has, if there's anything more before we go into the whole Village District discussion?
So Jan, any of these changes would affect?
Pardon?
Any changes in, that are made would affect the whole town? Not just Adamant?
No, we're not only Adamant.
Exactly, I mean, it, it, well, this portion affects Adamant.
Right.
But there's other issues at Maple, at Curtis Pond, there's issues in North Curtis, I mean, we, we have, we're a very wet town.
Yes, we are.
And, and so, this is probably the first time that we're going out to, to the areas and, you know, trying to establish the dialogue, before we put our final thing out, to do our final hearing, which we have to do two final hearings, one by the planning, one by the Select Board, before it can go and be voted on by the people. So we're really still along in this process, and I have no clue when we're gonna be ready to vote on this, but we're still working through it, and the important thing is to hear from the people that live and are affected by this.
I'd like to point out that we did modify, what you see in purple there, the 250-foot boundary for our Calis overlay, we can't do anything about the state's jurisdiction, but the Calis overlay, we extended it 800 feet on the eastern shore of Curtis Pond, because so many people told us that there were special problems there related to development on that side of the, of the pond, that we, we increased the overlay district there, which basically extended three hour, three-acre minimum lot size within, say, 800 feet from the water's edge, instead of 250 feet from the water.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and here, in Adamant, you might, and I'd like to hear someone talk about whether or not they wanna see the, the overlay district expanded, or you could maybe accomplish the same thing by taking the Village District and, and bringing it down, so it doesn't wrap around the quarry theater at the top, it comes down closer to the, to the center of the village.
And then make everything rural residential?
Everything here would be rural residential, three-acre minimum.
Which would be a three-acre minimum lot.
Where's the corner?
Controlling, you'd be reducing your Village District, and that's one of the questions we're asking, should we reduce the Village District, because do you want density on your Shoreland, that's basically what we're asking, and if you don't, what's the best way should we do that, should we reduce the district, make it rural residential, and if you do reduce it, where do you want your Village District to be?
What, what is the Village District, is that that little red thing on it?
No, that's the green.
No, it's all the green.
All of that green hatch is Village District, the way it stands now is the Village District in Calis.
Well, that's.
It doesn't seem as though the, the, the green part represents the village at all, the, most of the village is on the other side, and not in the Village District, and that's a very undeveloped and undevelopable along there, and you don't want it to, because you don't want them developing right on the shore anyway, and it, there's no sense in having that.
So, what you're saying is that as things currently stand, with no minimum lot size, someone, presumably the owners of the music school, could theoretically develop multiple, multi-unit housing along the edge of, of that road there, there's no, there's no restriction on that?
All in here, yes.
All that could be.
Yes.
The way things are right now, yes.
The way things are now, yes, that answers your question.
That's.
That doesn't make sense.
I'm all in favor of concentrating the development in the Village, and maybe extending the Village minimum lot area somewhere, but that doesn't make any sense to extend it there.
Yeah, but that changed the designation, I don't.
Pardon?
Well, it goes all the way up Quarry Road, it looks like it encompasses the end of the quarry.
So you're proposing kind of lock them off, top part of it, making it smaller?
Well, I mean, anybody who knows that land, it's essentially wet, a lot, a lot of it too, the only place it could really be developed would be all the way out at the end, which really makes no sense, it's a one road with, yeah.
Those are recognized wetlands.
Right.
So, so what is that?
Those are wetlands.
Those are recognized wetlands.
Those are state-designated wetlands.
These are actually, I think it's what Calis has, it's what Matt Peters did, that, that we accepted, so it's more than just the state, these are like.
Right, okay.
State plus Matt Peters.
So my question, Jan, was would this change the Village Center designation?
We, we're not talking about that yet, all we're talking about is this Village District here.
Yeah, the Village, the Designated Village Center is just an economic growth area, but it's really not impacted one way or another.
But it isn't even where there's the village, so.
Well, it is.
Well, the Designated, the Designated Village Center is, right the hard.
The rest of it isn't.
The, the minimum lot over.
Can you put it on, the Designated Village?
So, there really looks as though there's minimum, minimum opportunities even to build, or to, to create lots.
The minimum opportunities even to build or to, to create lots because of the wet areas.
Right. And remember, the designated village center is more of a state designation to be used to get grants. It doesn't necess, if, if you decide, or we decide, if, that we wanna make, let's say you wanna make, uh, this maybe the village area where you could do more concentrated, uh, development with the water flowing down that way, and you make this all rural residential, so that there's a three acre minimum lot, then, then we have to decide where do we want the village, or do you want this rural residential, and do you wanna? Planning commission, the, the, Central Vermont Planning recommends a village that goes a little bit, a village district that goes beyond the designated village center, but I don't know how we do that, that's, I don't know.
Is it why?
Um, they, I think they want to see, the, the, yeah, the Central Vermont Regional Planning wants to see a little bit of area where the, you can do quote unquote economic growth. And I'm doing it in quotes. That's the planning, Central Vermont Planning. And if you're gonna have any ability to do a concentrated economic development, you're gonna not, you're gonna do it a little bit beyond the designated village center. And they're, they recommend a, a radius, but we, we're kind of stuck because we got East Montpelier on one side and, you know.
Well, you've obviously got to have the ability for the village to go across to East Montpelier too.
Right.
Because that's where the people are.
Right.
And they're not up at the other end of the pond.
Can you add East Montpelier's zoning designations in this overlay?
And even if I did, it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean anything.
Because we have no control over East Montpelier.
But it would be interesting to see, I mean, that, ultimately, the shape of the village is gonna be determined not only by Callas zoning, but also by East Montpelier zoning, so it would, it would help you see what the whole village is. Right now, you're just seeing half of it, yeah.
The village, the village commercial center, which is really the red.
Yeah.
Is a little different than the village zoning.
Right.
So think about it like, like, I mean, not that Adamant really have a commercial zone, but think about it as where you'd want your dense commercial, uh, properties to be, business center to be, and then the dense housing around them. That's why you have a village designation for your zoning that's broader than the village center.
So you're, you're saying, for instance, if someone wanted to open a, an additional business in, in, open to the public in Adamant Village, they would be essentially limited to that orange area, not.
No, they would be, they would be aided in doing that if they were in the orange set.
But they would be able to do it in any of the green area.
Yeah. Or sidewalks and streetlights.
Yeah, yeah. But you want a dense housing possibility around that village center to some extent.
That's the green.
Yeah, and, and, and it may be the, the right map here, or maybe wrong, but you do want dense housing around where you picture your commercial zone being.
Why would it reach way up there?
Well, it might, maybe we would decide that we, it shouldn't. I mean, that's something for, for all of us to decide, and what extent it goes to. But you do definitely want both a village zoning and a, and a village commercial area.
I mean, I guess since you're here, I'll, I'll, my comment, then, I, yes, I think you certainly ought to move that down, way down Quarry Road closer, closer to Adamant, it doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense there.
See where, see where it comes out of side of the pond and then make it as an arc? So it heads towards the back half of Jerry Barton's?
Yeah.
That line just kept going right to the pond, would that be like?
I think you should go up a little farther than that, because it looks like that's potentially developable land there, it's outside of that wetland, and I don't know, I don't know who, is that Rupert, Ruth, Copper, Kowbranski's there?
Are you talking?
Yeah, I think something in there, so there's potential, possibly for somebody to put a house in there. I mean, that would be the logical place to have more development. And, but I think that's a hillside, actually, so I don't think it's.
Right.
Probably a different side, yeah.
I was driving there, there's a lot of hills.
Uh, keep, keep, keep in mind, uh, that, that, the, that you wanna have enough of a village zoning district that you incentivize growth there, rather than giving people incentives to develop far away from the village. So I would be. Why? Because you wanna concentrate people to, to live near each other and to live in a dense area around the village center.
Why do you wanna encourage growth?
You, you, you may not, but to the extent that growth is gonna happen, you want it to be concentrated around the village area and not dispersed. So the tighter you make the village area, the more likely you are to encourage people to build outside of it. So I would just say, you may wanna adjust the lines, I would just say, give a generous village zoning so that the, that provides enough opportunity for development for people to concentrate it there, if it is gonna happen.
Can I just ask who you are?
Uh, sorry, Louis Porter.
Did you sign in too?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Wow.
I, I wanna add something to what Louis is saying, John, if you could pull that map down so we can see more of what's north of there.
Yeah, I'll do my best.
Like that, so that area, that area that, the, the northern end of what's now designated as a, as a village area.
Yeah.
Um, that is essentially in what is one of the larger blocks of wild undeveloped land in Callas. It's that section owned by the music school, my parents own some of it, it goes over, um, Fowler's own some of that. But it's essentially a, a chunk, if you can, I don't know if you can pull that down. It's crazy to, it would be crazy to push development into that essentially wild quarry area. I mean, you can see that's, that's a, it's a, it's one of the larger pieces, even if you go, I don't know if you can drag that down.
That's where that whole magical area is, right?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, and it's a large, it's a large wilderness area, essentially, it's owned by a variety of different landowners, but.
Right.
John, can you point to where he's talking about?
I think they're talking about, uh, this, all this area up in here. Oops. All this wilderness up there.
Yeah.
That's owned by a variety of, a variety of landowners, but if you put concentrated development here.
Which you don't want.
It would just be bad for the water.
The one thing that, that the charter has, the planning commission is chartered with, is adding to our town plan on forest integrity and the cor, and the corridors. So that's gonna, you know, we gotta try to work all this together, so when we do that amendment to the town plan, if that village is gone, then we've got a better way of writing our forest integrity and, and corridors. And so that's why this is all important in terms of getting it all.
I think that district should stop where the gate is now.
Stop where the gate is.
And where the Quarry Road.
Well, that's way up there.
One little house.
That's way up there.
That's about right there, isn't it?
Yeah. I think it should stop.
So, so you, so you're locking it.
There's a quarry house and then there's a log cabin up there too. Eric and Donald do.
Right, well, all those cabins up there too.
Yeah.
The piano.
Yeah, well, the, well, the other ones, um, way, way at the top there is that whole area where all the small buildings are, um, when it used to be.
But those are potentially developable into full fledged houses, the way this is written out, yeah.
Well, exactly, so do we want that? Do we want that?
No, I don't think anybody wants that.
I don't wanna talk about, no.
But I, I wouldn't have ever thought that.
But if they're already existing.
Yeah, but it's controlled by non-controlling laws, and it has to go to the area.
Here's, here's some of them.
Yeah, so some of them are in, some of them are out.
This road goes to some of them, and there's the other one. That's, that's the quarry theater.
That's right.
So the quarry theater is actually outside the village.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And those little dots are.
These are the houses, the piano houses.
The buildings.
Practice rooms.
There's single room cabins.
There's twenty of them, we had to go visit them. One has listers.
Not all of them.
No, but all around.
They weren't just for music, for music, it was, it was for a different.
My first year being a listener.
A different thing that was gonna happen.
Cultural sound.
The whole cultural sound, yeah. Artists, artists.
So what I'm hearing, uh, there seems to be somewhat of a consensus of moving a village district down. We don't know exactly where, but, and allowing for some concentrated growth area in and around the designated village center and down, but getting rid of that village district up there and converting that to rural residential, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
No, not, not rural residential, but I'd like it to be village with a single acre, no, no size specified.
The village.
Rural residential requires minimums.
Three acres.
Yes.
Right.
But the other option is the, um, village, no?
Village has no requirement.
No requirement.
Right, so you, that means anybody can build anything, anywhere, is that what you want?
And break no condos down there, next to it.
No.
Actually, that's, that's been hanging over everybody's head for the last forty years.
Well, good. With no, with no restrictions, they could do that.
It's, it's not like, it's not like that's something where, that's, that might happen, that's, that's the way things are right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so the question.
You'd like to see a big development in there, Barbara?
No, I would like to see small individual houses.
More houses?
Pardon? Yes, like, when you're at the, the co-op store, and you go around the corner, there are those three nice houses next to each other.
Right.
Which, which two are now used by the music school. But wouldn't it be nice to have three families living in three houses? And having that same kind of a cluster development in other places?
But not three more houses in addition to that?
In, in available place, in available places, within this village district.
But not.
Not, not on three, minimum three acre.
Oh, what, I didn't, no, okay, Barbara, what we're saying is that if, if we keep, if we move the village. Oh, man, okay.
You need a pointer, Jan.
I know, and, no.
Yeah, I picked a spot.
I need, I need my cat thing. Yeah, if we, if we, if it's, let's say we're.
Here's a pointer.
That pointer.
Here's a pointer, Barbara, here's a pointer.
Right, right here.
The audience, are you offered a, a pointer?
Oh, thank you.
Just don't get anybody there.
No.
Pointer for the guys.
Okay, so let's say this is the village district here. This would allow you to do your concentrated.
Yes.
But up here is where we're saying.
Then it becomes rural residential.
We want this rural residential up here because we want that three acre minimum here. So we're trying to decide.
Yes, okay.
Where this goes.
Or even more restricted, since it is a, a very wild area, and we, we all seem to agree that we wanna keep the big areas wild, what else could it be, Jan?
So then this would go here.
Could be resource recreation, which is a ten acre minimum lot size.
Yeah, we do have that.
With, with considerable other restrictions.
There's significant limitation on what you can do with that lower piece, but just above it.
I think too, John, there's a lot of steep slopes around there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, are gonna be controlling things. All right.
So are other folks thinking the same thing, or it seems like it?
Yeah, and it's not that we can build more buildings, but just use the existing buildings. I thought you were saying you wanted to have more buildings.
I do wanna have more buildings.
But in a more.
I want, I want the opportunity to.
But in a more concentrated area.
In a, more building in a concentrated area.
Which is what the state is.
But there is an issue to that. And I'll tell you what the issue is, that we've been told in, in, in planning, and that is, when you start doing concentrated building, do you need a water system? Or are you gonna allow everybody having their own wells? And do you need, need a wastewater system? And I tell you right now, that I don't wanna be part of having a wastewater system, because I look at what's happening in Playfield and the millions of dollars they're spending. Um, and so when we talk about development, we don't have a good infrastructure for it. We don't have the ability to have, the, the, East Callas has the East, um, Callas Fire District, they're limited. We can't grow there because they're stuck at fifty, three users. And unless they change, or we develop a whole new water system there, we, East Callas is not gonna grow.
Another thing that's gonna be a development problem, no matter how big your lots are in this area, is your onsite wastewater system.
Example.
Which has to get stepped above the state.
The soils and groundwater around here are terrible.
Right.
Well, let's, let's look at it this way, is that it's, could be difficult, there may be very, very few options for it, but why limit the possibility of development, more clustered development, smaller lots?
They're not.
Where it is possible.
Because you don't have to live next to it, I do.
But there's nothing in this, there's no.
You don't want, you don't want to have a neighbor?
There's nothing in this that would limit it. It would, it would take, it would take away that, that area that sticks up, it would take that area out of it.
Yeah.
But the, the unlimited, minimum, no minimum lot size encouraged of concentrated development in the, in the village area, that would still be entirely intact, uh, just, just only in this area where it makes sense, not in the upper. I don't know if there's any, I mean, I, yeah, there should be a way to encourage it even more in the village than there is, but yeah, it's a hurdle between water and septic and existing lots, and, yeah.
What's the zoning for the white, that's out to the.
That's rural residential.
And that's how many acres?
Three acres.
Three?
And it's three hundred feet of rock.
I mean, we provided a comparison to the difference between village and rural residential.
Right now, the, uh, the practical, uh, lot size that, uh, that we find is developable in the village district, which doesn't have, by regulation, doesn't, doesn't, it's not controlled by lot size, but it is controlled by citing, uh, septic and water. And if you have both septic and water on the same lot, it's pretty tough to get a lot smaller than three quarters an acre. It's, um, in most cases, it, it essentially works out to about one acre lot sizes that become the, the, uh, effective minimum lot size, because that's what you need in order to, in order to cite your, uh, facilities on it. If you have a water system, you can, you can get that down to probably half of that. Which is, you know, which is a pretty, pretty plump lot for, uh, places like Berry City, but it's a pretty small lot for places like, uh, Lightning Ridge Road. So, um, you know, it's, it does strike a, uh, an effective balance that, that is the, uh, it is essentially the character that you're looking at right now in, uh, traditional development within the villages in Callas. That's what we're, that's what we're seeing. Even in North Callas, where there are lots of very, very small lots, those lots are not being populated, just because they can't, they can't do with them what one needs to be able to do in order, what I was.
So the way things are right now, so I bought Greg's place and have that big lawn between the house and the church. I could conceivably subdivide that and put a couple of houses in there.
Yes.
That's right, yeah. Except for the wetlands problem.
Well, there's no wetlands indicated on that map.
No, it looks pretty good, actually.
Well, all I know, I know, I know it's that. I absolutely know that it's wet, I understand that. But it, but at least on there, it's not indicated that it's a wetland.
Right.
Which is interesting, because Donna's, you know, her, her business is located in a wetland.
Right.
Um, you know, I'm looking at Eric and Donna's house, and it's surrounded. But anyways, but yeah, I could conceive, but not that I want to, but.
Yes, conceivably, yes.
Okay.
And anything along there as well, but.
Question? I have a weird question, question. Okay, that line that goes so straight across Martin Road.
Yeah.
Where? The, on the left hand side?
That diagonal line right on the left hand.
Yeah, oh, it just, it's so straight, is that just a, is it a property line?
I think that is a property line.
I think it might be a property line too.
I think it's.
Yeah, it's, it's just a stone wall in the field. It's in between the, my two parcels.
So that's why that was made that way, to, because it was a property line?
We don't know.
When, when zoning was, when, when zoning was initially, um, uh, proposed and passed in Callas, property lines were one of the primary.
It's not a property line.
It's not a property line.
It's, no.
No.
Well, there's lots of things wrong with that, now, there's a Brook Theater that doesn't exist, you know.
It may be an interment.[1711.94]
No, it's not, I just like.
That's the brook out of your pond.
I know, but it doesn't go that way.
Right, but that's what they, that's where they.
I think they just guessed. State. Yeah. They thought it must go that way, but it doesn't.
Yeah, you're right, those, those right down to your house, that three, the minimum. Cause that must be the.
No, it's, it's farther than that.
That must be the corner right at the bottom of your.
That's the, that's the corner of the field.
Carl Zucker.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
But not the zoning goes, that, that, where the three, where the minimum or the, the village district.
Yeah, it's basically at the, at the beginning of the hill.
A beginning of the hill, right down to your house, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, you are, you said it correctly when you said that it's hard to know what the forces were that were brought to bear. When they proposed zoning, basically anybody who had, who had a suggestion to make could come in unless anybody had an objection to that suggestion, they, they said, sure, why not? You know, so that, initially there was a lot of that, and then as time has gone on, there's been less and less and less. I mean, I don't know about the diagonal line, but the general area makes sense because you want your dense zoning along the roads near the village center.
You're, you're Callis, right?
Yeah. I have a little bit East Mount Player.
Yeah, unless you get sober, cause you're, you're East Mount Player, right, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the profit, if you look at this map, the only really developable land in, um, close to the village of Adamant is, is those fields that Joyce the Mountain and Sherry Galsin, th- those are the only dry.
Right.
Elevated spots, I don't know what, how East Mount Player has that zone, I don't, but I don't think East Mount Player has a village district that covers that area, and then there's the town forest sticking into that.
Right, exactly.
So it's really, Adamant's really hemmed in.
It's pretty damp too.
Right, East Mount Players got their, uh, new village master plan, but it's more in the, off of hybrid.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure they have any village designation for Adamant in their.
I don't know.
They don't have the cultural resources to do it.
Yeah.
We don't?
East Mount Player?
Can you put the parcel lines over this, or?
Can you put the parcels on, John?
The parcels are on, they're just being, uh.
They're kind of, they're kind of thin, yeah, yeah.
So where is East Mount Player, John?
Uh, that's the town line right there.
Right there.
Do, do you?
It's far from the town line.
You?
Yeah.
Does the zoning boards, are they different, I mean, there's a, there's a village designation here that's arbitrarily cut in half. Do you, does the zoning board of, of Callis and East Mount Player talk to each other about coordinating?
We have not. I was sitting here thinking, maybe we need a meeting with East Mount Player, I don't know.
I'm gonna ask Jeanne Bissinger about that, cause I think she's on the zoning play.
What would be beyond that orange polygon in East Mount Player, I'm just trying to think.
My, my house.
Nothing. All right, nothing.
That would be village, I mean, like Donna's business?
Yes.
The orange.
She's.
She's, she's.
She's, she's.
She's distant house.
She has a designated.
By businesses, church, or a cultural resource. I'm not aware of any cultural resource south of, of where the red blob is right now.
Well, Rock Hill's house and part of Allison's house.
Either commercial.
But commercial.
Well, it is a cultural.
It has to be a business, church, or a store, something like that.
So the designation's probably fine, but in terms of where the village is, if we wanted to make.
District or zoning, I have no idea.
We can change, that's what we could, we're changing. With input from these folks.
Donna's business isn't in the red.
Where is it?
Well, that's good.
But it's not?
I think.
No, no, it stops, look, turn this, it stops at Center Road. Donna's on the other side of, uh, Center and Avenue.
Donna's business is in that little section that's not wetlands and not red.
Yeah, okay, a little.
Right there.
Right in there, yeah.
That tiny little piece right there?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then Donna, who Donna?
If she, if she, if there's a business there, then actually maybe the designated village center map should be redrawn. That would be something.
Yeah, we go in for renewal, we might wanna expand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's a business, right.
What would, what would that do for Donna?
It would let her take advantage of some.
She'd get all grants.
For you to go sidewalk.
Like a streetlight, yeah.
That was to include Donna's business.
Yeah.
You could build a, a single parking area.
Yeah, but if, if we were to change the designated village center, then it would be extended to encourage that business, which is near that.
That's great. How about the old post office building, what, which side of that, is that in Callis or East Mount Player?
That's Callis.
Uh, that, was, is that the music, the music school building now? I don't remember what it's called, the white one across, across from Donna's.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's in the red.
I'm sure it's in it, Robbie. No, no, not the big one.
That's in, that's in Callis.
Right.
And that's in, in the red.
Yeah, I think it's part of the red designated village, I think.
Well, I'm not sure, that, that is not there, cause it's right across the street, so I just, I don't think it comes down quite far enough to include that. Just that little piece of green in there.
Just between the wetland and the village.
So, I, I mean, other than, um, hearing to bring the village district down, more towards the end of the pond, make that rural residential, and I think in three years, we have to renew our designated village center. We can make a change at that point to the designated village center.
But there's also, was the idea of having res- a resource recreation district as part of?
I don't know, I mean, we could, but resource recreation is.
And we're also looking at forest integrity, so maybe that's like the next phase. I think right now we're just doing shoreline, and then this village district size issue popped up, and we wanted to see what people thought. Uh, but yeah, that can definitely go on the to-do list, just to look at what to do with the large, unfragmented.
With the increased use and increased activity at the community club.
Right.
There's the current resource recreation.
What, what would that do for your, um, designated village center? It's not really commercial, but.
That's like a civic.
It's a community building.
It's a public building, it's a civic.
It's sort of, the same thing in Maple Corner, they have the Maple Corner Community Center across from the store.
Right.
And so that's their designated village center. So this, I mean, it could very well.
So is this part of that little red?
I don't know.
No.
No, I don't think so.
It's a little candy club.
Martin Road is.
Where is it?
It's that little square.
It's the little square out on Martin Road there.
Where, John?
If, if you go out on Martin Road there, about halfway to where the village is.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Right there.
That little square, that's the center.
That's the community.
That's this block here.
That's this.
So you'd have, yes, that would be.
So extend the red out to that perhaps.
I, I think I remember when they were considering this, um, the proposal was that the designated village center would extend and wrap around it, and something on regional planning said it couldn't happen.
Why?
And because of the distance, there was also a proximity.
They want it concentrated.
And, and the quarry couldn't be part of it either.
Or it's not up there.
Well, the quarry's way, way.
I remember it was a request because, um, it would involve with grant writing for the, for this, and this is a school at one point too, so.
I recall it came up, and this is what we ended up with, what the state ended up giving us.
What's that red line?
Oh, I, some of the property.
That's too bad because if you.
Yeah, John had to write up the designated village center somewhere.
So the, so the orange and the red are the village's district, designated village.
Well, well, this darker thing here, this is an overlap or shoreline overlay.
Okay.
Over, yeah.
And there's a little wetland there.
Overlay on the designated village, the two things are like, they, they don't really mix well.
No, and there's a little wetland there.
And there's a, well, that's, that's the ornamental ponds and all that.
Oh, okay.
Which does make an argument for not extending the shoreline protection over the road, in this particular case.
Because of the designated center?
Yes, I constructed.
Right, cause you're, you're basically, you're basically encouraging, you're basically encouraging commercial development and discouraging it. You're competing at the same time. I think, I think that would be a valid thing to open for discussion, that exact, that exact question. If other people have, uh, an, an opinion on that that they could voice right now, so that we can hear it and report it, that would be great.
What is there now in the red part that overlaps the shoreline, what is there for buildings and stuff?
The main buildings for the music school.
But nothing else?
No.
So why pull out a village center?
Where's the church? Church is.
Across the street.
Well, we're not, we're not talking, we're not, we're not discussing the designated village center, we're discussing, um, the, whether the Shoreland Protection Act should extend across the road in that one spot. Not, this is not a Callis-wide discussion, this is specific to that, to this one small area. Uh, whether we're going to allow the road to be a barrier to, uh, the, uh, restrictions of, of, uh, state shoreline protection, or whether we're going to extend it across the road to the full two hundred, a hundred foot buffer and two hundred and fifty foot, a hundred foot no build and two hundred and fifty foot buffer.
Just in the specific.
Just in that one spot.
Just in the center.
Yeah, it's crazy to have it do it in this.
I mean, you have to, you have to, you have, in your mind's eye, you have to view where the road is, uh, right now, and whether we are better served by the map the way it's drawn here, or whether we are better served by getting rid of the purple portion of the orange overlay that you're seeing.
I'm in favor of getting rid of it, put me down for in favor of getting rid of it, yeah.
Getting there supports smart growth, but I'm curious about conservation question. You want it to stop at the road.
I want the road, it to stop at the road in that section, right there.
But, but why?
Why?
Yeah.
Uh, well, for several reasons, I guess, first of all, the reason that Louis cited, it's crazy to have regulations that are contradicting each other. Also because I think that there's no, there's nothing that's gonna happen in that area that hasn't already essentially happened, that's gonna make a difference on, I mean, it's already lawns and, and fairly well-developed there, so what, what is the point?
Could it be further developed? There?
I think if it were further developed, that would fall under some sort of, I mean, I, I think what we have right now is a restriction where technically Eric's flower gardens, where he dug and put in posts and perimeter fences around his gardens, was probably not allowed by the, by the regulation that's there, and that, because it's somebody's yard, I mean, a guy essentially was doing yard work in his yard, and that's disallowed by, by these confusing regulations, I don't see any, I don't see any gain.
I know it's disallowed, but he should check with the state, he'd be on the other side of the road, right, on the pond side of the road, so.
No, he's, he's between the pond and the road.
Right, so what we're talking about now is carving out what's across the road.
True, true point.
And, and Denise, the way I look at it is, we've told the state, this is where we wanna build, this is our tight, traditional business center, such as it is in Adamant, we wanna encourage growth and focus it here. And then as planning commission, we're saying, but we wanna protect water quality and all these wonderful things with shoreline and go even above and beyond the state and across the road.
Right, okay, and I just wanna make sure I'm hearing what I'm thinking here.
Now, we're kind of, it's been pointed out, that's a little inconsistent to say, build here or wait, no, don't build here.
I mean, technically, you, you couldn't cut a shrub in the, in the church yard without talking to the state because you'd be violating the shoreline prohibition against cutting vegetation within the two hundred and fifty foot boundary, well, that doesn't make any sense.
Right, so when they did landscaping around the church.
Every time they did landscaping, they'd have to go to the state and maybe also the town and get permission to cut or plant shrubs, that doesn't make any sense.
Continued uses are allowed to continue, but, but if someone did propose doing something that was a radical change from an established pattern, yeah, they'd have to.
If they wanted to put a new steeple on the church.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, what else could be, what other opportunities is there to build?
Build another house back there.
Well, that's, that's the question, is there an opportunity to build a house back there?
Well, it's, it's all wet, I don't think it would perk, but, um, but the land is there.
Well, I think right now, if you wanted to build a house there, you would have one part of the regulation saying, we're encouraging development in this area, and another part of the regulation saying, we're not allowing you to do anything. I, I think the way it would actually work is, you'd have to go to the state and say, we wanna develop this piece of land because the town wants it built in the village.
So, John, the green. The green that grows around is our two hundred and fifty mark.
This is it, this is.
But that's for.
Stops at the road.
But where, what, what Callis is proposing goes beyond that, right?
Yeah, went, went way down here.
We go way down there is what Callis is proposing.
Right, and this is what the state.
So, we're hearing that there's some concern, they would almost rather we keep it on the state in this area.
Still that one little area that's inconsistent, cause the state covers that one.
Yeah, there's still that weirdness there.
But for the most part.
You're, you're, I mean, you're definitely gonna have some places where shoreline protection crosses into a village and even downtown centers, no doubt. I'm just wondering if we wanna minimize that in this one area, and I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but.
Well, the easiest way to write it up would be to have the, the boundaries of our proposed shoreline, our shrub, stop at, at Haggett Road.
Could I ask, um, you know, there, there are similar, roughly similar issues, um, in Maple Corner with Curtis Pond. Big issue really, cause there's more houses and more people in the, and the, the perspective, I think, of the Lakes and Streams people and the conservation people probably is that to the maximum extent possible, uh, in order to protect these waterways, which all interconnect, and there's a lot of emphasis now on, on doing that, then, um, it probably should get a nod over the, the, uh, village district standards, uh, where possible. I recognize a lot of people wouldn't agree with that for lots of good reasons, but, but I think that would be, I'm speaking for a lot of people I'm not authorized to speak for, but I think they would probably tend to, to, um, urge that you keep the two hundred, that you, that you cross the road and keep the two hundred foot.
Well, that's why I'm asking, what you could possibly do in that area, cause that's what I'm thinking.
Well, I mean, as was pointed out, there's stuff there already, and what's there already can continue as it is, unless there's any change big enough that would trigger the regulations, but what it prevents is, is, um, further development in that two hundred and fifty feet, uh, even across the road, if, if you choose to extend it across the road. So you could have more or less what's there now, but you wouldn't have, um, further development, um.
In that two hundred and fifty.
In that two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's kinda my question, is what else could be built there? You know, is there, is it housing or businesses or, you know, what?
I mean, if you're in the village district, you can, if, based on what's permitted and what goes to conditional use, I mean, it could be anything. Heck, in village district, they allow a vet clinic, for goodness sake, in the village district.
We need one of those in Callis.
We do, actually.
Yeah, but not, maybe in the village district, yeah. Uh, but this is Curtis Pond, and this is the solution that we've made for Curtis Pond is on the, on the east shore.
Need your cane?
Along there, we made that an eight hundred foot, uh, overlay. Meaning that, that, um, vegetative management practices extend to the eight hundred foot mark. In order to protect, because Curtis Pond has a lot of, um, water quality issues.
Yep.
And what's the green?
The green is the village district for, um, Maple Corner. But what we.
And the little orange thing is the Maple Corner.
Designated village center, yeah.
And why didn't the eight hundred feet extend to the left side of it, John?
Pardon?
Well, it, it does now, this, this is our proposed, if you saw the existing, it does go eight hundred feet on the other side.
There's no road on that side, is there?
There's no road and steep slopes would prevent any development there.
Yeah, there's only one property owner, and that's a resource recreation up there.
Right, right, then, yeah, right.
But that's crazy, cause there's, it's solid camps all the way along there. Right on top of the water.
They're all conditional, they're all non-conforming, that, that was the thing that we found, is sixty percent of everything on all of the lakes are non-conforming, as it is. They don't conform to any existing shoreline that we have, and everything is, yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that we all were researching when we were doing this. We looked at these parcel by parcel by parcel to find out what we had and how many, all of those are non-conforming lots.
So that's very much.
Sixty.
Huh?
Fifty percent?
Uh, fifty to sixty percent, when we counted all, when we counted, uh, uh, number ten and, um, all the lakes up north, I'm doing the mind blank, but yeah, everything, Lumerton Camp Road, everything is non-conforming there. So it's fascinating, um, problems that we have.
These would affect it only going forward.
Yeah.
Those problems, exchange hands, what happens if, if they sell the property, does that go with it? They're, they need some of the permits, if someone sells the property?
If they can sell it, but if somebody wants to do something with it, then they have to get a permit.
You can't change. Or you should, not, you can't, not you can't, it's more difficult to change.
They would have to go to conditional use review with ERB.
But they mow right down to the water's edge, and if they, somebody sells a camp and the next person buys it, they can still mow it under the water.
That's right.
The grandfathered, um, aspect of a property is transferable.
Yeah. Although we are trying to change that.
Right, we're trying to educate people about the value of not mowing to the edge of the water.
And, and we, we made the limit, um, our proposal is that, in the changes, is that right now it's a five year, we're proposing a two-year limit. If you don't mow within two years, you have to follow the buffer. So now it's five, we wanna restrict it down to two, and that's gonna be in our proposal.
You think people will vote for it?
I don't know.
I don't know, you guys are the voters.
We hope you will help everybody to vote for it, yes.
It's easy for me to vote for it, I don't know.
All right, um, let's see.
We haven't even talked about Sutton Pond.
Do we want to talk about Sutton?
No, we don't.
What, what can we talk about, I mean, it's, there's nothing there, people go there.
The state stops at the road, our proposed goes over the road. And, and there is, uh, a little bit of village in there, but from what I've seen, nobody could build anything unless it was on. And, and there is a little bit of village in there, but from what I've seen, nobody could build anything unless it was on stilts.
Not in Callis, no.
How many houses are around there now?
I don't know.
No, there's just one in Callis.
Where? Were, are, are you Sodom?
There's just before this house there right now, right? In the, in the, in between the two, right, just there, yeah.
There, there's one house right there.
Isn't Karen in Callis?
Well, that's Karen's. Karen, Karen's in Callis, and everybody else is in Eastmont.
Yeah, right there is another house.
Yeah, I don't see anything else constructed inside the.
Not in Callis.
No.
I, I don't think, I mean, the most important part is the village area here, in the Adamant area. Well, any other issues? I, I think, I've heard several things, and we have some work to do in terms of, we'll change. What we will do is look at how we want to do the village district, and we would come back and ask and meet with you if, if this meets with what you would like proposed, that we would then put in our regulations. We cannot change the village district center until 2021, but we would, could obviously put it on the burner, that this is, there might be changes that we want to make at the designated village center.
Who does that, the state or CDFC?
We have to do it through the Central Vermont Regional Planning, I think. Is there anything else?
Did, did all the landlords or what, that would be affected, did they get notification?
I think so. Melanie gave me.
I just got some old emails just from the partners and from Ruth, and, but we haven't talked to them yet.
I mean, we do, I think everybody, it's posted on our porch forum, the, the notice and stuff, so we try to really make sure people know what's going on.
And we can always leave this information at the call-up for other people to, 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 you know, read and figure out, so that, we'll leave some copies at the call-up.
So you don't, you said in the beginning, you don't have any idea on, of course, I'm thinking process, as I always do.
No, we don't.
No?
I'm not, I'm not going that route. I'm, we're not ready, because everything new comes in, and we gotta do a lot more.
Okay.
Frank and Francis.
Right, yeah, I'd rather you guys take your time.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be cooking for a while, so.
And also, we can take comments by email or phone or.
Right, you, a lot of you got my email, and, and you know Melanie's email, Gary's got a great email. We all have email, and we.
Except for Gary's boundless address.
Comments, as you, as, as you think of things.
Only you.
No, not only me.
And I, is there anything else that anybody has on their agenda? Have we covered all of your issues? That would be my question.
Sounds like some, some varying ideas for how far up or down the village should go along with the road, but.
Yeah, the road issue is gonna be the, that's, that's a big separate area, is what we do with the road in this area.
I, I think we should do a quick poll, to see where people want to see this line drawn. We're gonna, we're gonna end up comparing a map with a view when we start doing these public hearings.
Right.
So.
So before the gate, that's probably the northernmost point that people suggested. Others said somewhere in the middle of the groups, parcel.
There's a property line.
Any thoughts?
There's the wetlands.
I love the idea where the, where it comes curves around. Down there?
Yeah, just below the wetland.
Yeah, you can't do really very much with that long, skinny, wetland right there, so it's hard to, to.
But this doesn't even show the buffer. By the time you add a fifty-foot buffer, there's nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Right, and that's.
So maybe.
This, this does have potential here.
Yeah.
And a potential is something that, that you, what you're looking at, maybe drawing the line at the gate makes the most sense.
Yeah, somebody's mentioned a gate.
That probably seems like the village, to me.
Yeah.
Probably seems like the village, to me, and it's separated by that wetland, so that's what we hope.
So.
Yeah, you're saying, but, but, but the village is.
The place where they want to see Benson Call.
Yeah.
And so.
So, so you want it here?
Yeah, that's where.
Yes, or not here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, because up, up higher doesn't make any sense, because it's separated by the wetland.
Any, anybody who wants it here, would you raise your hand, so I can see?
Okay?
Hey, you want it down here, Kim?
The other place that we've been talking about is up at the gate. Who, who would like to see it? Who would prefer it at the gate?
Can you say what you're asking?
Cool. The, 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 the boundary for the village district, we're, we're identifying this as one potential, and the gate as one potential.
And I like, and I like so hard.
You're gonna have to articulate that a little better.
Just past the wetlands.
Just past the wetlands. Okay.
Like.
So, yeah.
Right.
They can't. How many would want it, how many are agreeable at the, at the top of the wetland? One. How many at the bottom of the wetland? Four.
Five.
Five. And how many up at the gate?
Oh, I thought that's what you asked.
One, two, three. I think the five gates all at the bottom have one.
Well, we're.
Yeah, I, I thought you said the gate.
We can have everybody stand up and just sit down.
Oh, my God.
All right, that's a good answer.
So the other question, if, if you, if you bear with me for another minute, the other question that we talked about at length, and we had one person who was articulate on one end of the spectrum, and one person who was articulate on the other end of the spectrum, and I'd really like to know where everybody else stands, and that's this purple area in here, whether that should remain protected by buffer, or whether that should drop out at the road. So, is, can I get some other people weighing in on, on those two options?
Okay, so who, how, how many want it dropped at the road?
Uh, we're gonna get to that.
Oh, okay.
Please.
All right.
Do you know why?
I'd like to, I just would like to hear some more opinions. We have, we have one on one side and one on the other side, and there's a lot of gray area in between, so.
Let me say that it's not gonna be much of a problem for the water if you take away that protection, because the water is flowing.
Yeah, yeah.
The wa- because of the way the water flows, that protection is not gonna be any use. You see what I mean?
Yeah, we've got the same thing at, at the bottom of number ten, and we've got it at the dam at Curtis.
We, let me say that, let me say that that is probably the most, the one most divisive discussion that we have had between our otherwise beautifully harmonious planning commission, is that exact question. And that's the reason I want to hear from you, you all, without me polluting the water with my own opinion, so, as it were. So, we have, we have this purple section, how should it go?
But Gary, the point of it is to protect the water, right? Isn't that the point?
The, the point, the, the do, the, the balance that we're trying to find, the right point in between, is, is development, uh, traditional development within village, traditional development patterns, which suggest that we should allow and encourage development within village districts, or the other side of the, the coin is our concern about water quality and runoff and residential impact on the integrity of our lakes and streams, so that, that's the.
But that wasn't the question that was asked. The question that was asked, or the point that was made, was that because of the direction that the water flows, it doesn't impact the water very much to remove the protection.
Doesn't, it doesn't impact this water, but it sure affects that water.
Right, I'd be, I, you know, I'd worry, what happens if these schools sold, and someone comes inside, talking, take Barney Hall out and put up, like, I don't know, a condominium with eight units. I mean, I would.
Yeah, I, I prefer. You have to worry about that, though.
Well, it'd be within the, the village, village center, it would be allowed.
Would it be on a different, you're there.
Yeah, they'd allow it.
Not, not just about. Village district.
In the village district, that would be allowed. So I'd be more apt to want to keep that purple on the other side of the road to, you know, prevent that from happening.
Okay, that's, that's a good opinion. Anyone else?
Now, that affects your land. You're the only one here who's, who that actually affects, isn't it?
Nah, I go just a touch. Well, not even, not even. It's more the church property. I go, my property goes right up to it.
I would like to speak to this, this specter of making condominiums. We do have zoning regulations where a, a project like that would go before the, the DRB and be scrutinized in many ways. So it's not, it's not that somebody can just come in and put in a condominium. That's, that's kind of one of those scary things.
Wouldn't that also fall under Act two fifty somehow, that kind of?
No, only if it's ten units.
Only if it's ten units or whatever? It would also certainly have to have a approved septic for the greater use, which would be almost impossible unless.
Well, they could take Barney Hall and just add and put another story on it, or, you know, break it up into whatever, and they don't want that somewhere else.
I get, I'll just make one more point. It seems to me that those are legitimate concerns. Addressing them through shoreline protection is the wrong, wrong tool for addressing that concern, and I think Barbara's probably right, that the way that that gets addressed is through other zoning functions, not by, now, now maybe the shoreline protection should be extended that way to protect the water, but that's not the right way to protect against a condominium development going there.
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be the only way to protect against someone coming in, carving up something and wanting to build, but it would certainly add to the protection of that property.
Well, the shoreline overlay was to protect the shoreline and the habitat. I mean, that was the purpose of the shoreline overlay, and where it is, whether it goes beyond the road or not, is the kind of, you know, the crucial debate.
Any other, any other opinions?
You said what?
Just to the road.
Stop at the road?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna get to a vote in just a minute. Right now, I just want to fully expand on everybody. Everybody's got something churning inside, and I want to bring that out for all of us to hear. So, anybody else?
Well, just as a point, if you extend it across the road, then you've basically extremely complicated anything that goes on in the village center, because you've got one section that is and one section that isn't. Just a point.
I think we're ready for a vote. Are we ready for a vote? All right. Who would like to see it the way it's mapped right here? Who would like to see that the way it's mapped this way, with the protections coming out on this side of the road? I know who you're gonna vote for, get your hand up.
That goes, that goes to the road.
Can I vote even though I don't live here?
Oh, I'm being pardoned.
That's right, that, that's going up to the road.
No, this is, the, the road is here, so this is extending across the road.
So we're voting now on shoreline protection extending the full two hundred and fifty feet beyond the road?
Correct, that's correct.
That one spot.
Okay, hands again?
One, two, three.
Four? I see four. Okay, and, and curtailing it at the road. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you guys for the vote, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to really, I wanted to thank the planning commission, you could do this. This was really, really well done.
Yeah.
I want to thank all of you for coming. You don't know, when we're planning this, it's like, are we only gonna get one person to show up? So it's really crazy, but so many of you came. And thank you, all of you.